Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I have just learned, at least for the moment, I'm the only one of the commissioners here. Rick Dahl was excused last week. I don't know what's happening on the other side, and it doesn't sound like the clerk knows either. So, ah, because because it's recorded, it may be useful to proceed anyhow. And I apologize for the one-sidedness of it. Let's go ahead and have our time and hope something useful comes out of one commissioner.
Okay, good morning. Kathy Funk Baxter, Finance Director. The first presentation we have on the agenda for today is finance. And this is where we do an overview of some of our major funds. And so Bailey has that to pull up.
I just realized I hadn't logged in yet. This is not an auspicious beginning.
Recording in progress.
There we go.
Okay, so we're ready to start. So next page, Bailey. So this is an overview of revenue versus expenses as of August. For our general fund, our revenues are, as of August, were about thirty-five million. Our expenses were approximately almost forty-four million. But it should be footnoted that for both general fund and road fund, our property taxes, because of the way that they're due, there's a second half of our property taxes, substantial amount that's due in October. So this will look interesting with the deficit showing right now. I have a little over, almost eight point eight billion dollars for general fund. For road fund, their revenues are showing at thirteen point eight. Their expenses are a little less than thirteen million for a surplus of about eight hundred thousand. And then the Health Department revenues are two point, almost two point five. Expenses to almost two point one for a surplus of four hundred thousand, basically. And then building and planning revenue is sitting at almost two point one million versus expenses of one point nine. So for a surplus of about two hundred thousand dollars right now. So not too bad considering we haven't received the other second half of our property taxes for, that will come in in October. And that's, this is as of August for eight months of activity.
If we were to look at this in August of twenty twenty-three, it would look about the same.
Yes. So.
And we have Superior Court here in force or en force, en masse. They would have a, have a similar picture? No, they would be far more consistent because they get their budget ahead of time.
Yeah, the majority of their revenue is general fund. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so next slide is, this is just at a glance, and this is, this goes to your comment. What did we look like as of August last year? So these are some of the major categories of our revenue. I just selected the larger fields. So for taxes, we've, we've brought in about seventeen million dollars of our taxes. And last year, we brought in, we had brought in about eighteen million. The drop there is attributed to the sales tax and also our timber excise tax. So, but we're right on track on our property taxes with where we were last year. Eleven point three for this year versus eleven, basically eleven point three last year. And then also for general fund, I decided to also highlight intergovernmental, intergovernmental. And just that large one is our PUD privilege tax. And we are at a hundred percent of budget. And last year, we were at about eighty-six percent of budget. Then when I look at road fund, as far as taxes, which is one of their larger revenues streams, they're, again, they're about almost exactly the same as last year. They're seven point seven, almost seven point eight. And last year, they were almost seven point eight at the same point in time. And then they're behind a little bit from, compared to last year, also on timber excise tax. But we're above a budget on that, so. And then their other large revenue source, other than their grants, state grants and federal grants, is their motor vehicle fuel tax. And we're at about forty-eight percent of budget. Almost a million dollars of the two million dollar budget. And last year, we were almost exactly the same spot, about a million dollars collected there. So we did bring this revenue budget down slightly from what it was last year.
A lot of numbers here. By the way, I invite anyone in the audience who would like to ask, to please feel free to ask. The
Oh, and I did include the last line for it's not showing, I guess my slide need, I need to adjust my slide a little bit. But the mental health tax, which is the one that has been sunsetted. I actually wanted to show that one as well. It's, we received all the money this year for the mental health tax because it stopped in March. But last year, at this point in time, we had received about one point six million dollars.
If I look at the marijuana excise tax, it seems pretty low for our income. How much? I mean, I'm a fond believer of you tax that which you want to discourage. And you, you tax it only up to the point where it gets driven underground. You don't want to do that. So how much, I, I think this is, we collect a significant amount compared to the retail sales volume. Am I correct?
I could do that analysis for you. I, I think our retail sales are larger than this particular tax, our sales tax from retail? Is that what you're asking?
No, I, I'm thinking if I remember numbers correctly, we are north of twenty million in annual sales and of marijuana sales. And for us to collect hundred and two thousand is on the budget, it would, it's, it just
You're talking statewide?
Yeah, statewide. It is beyond what we can do, but I, I use the bully pulpit here to try and get the, keep the public informed of all kinds of machinations and gamesmanship that, that do happen.
Yeah, I can get that information for you because it's available.
Yeah, I would put that in your spare time.
Yeah, it's actually, it's actually on the last economic update. There's some information about that. So it'll be easily together.
And are timber tax substantially higher this, this time?
As of this point, we actually are lower on our timber excise tax than we were last year at this point for both road and general fund, just slightly, yeah.
Do I misread this? The timber excise task, tax for twenty twenty-four actuals shows eight hundred and thirty-six K?
Yes, for road fund.
Which is substantially
Actually more than what we budgeted. We under, we under budgeted this year and last year as well on that, on road fund.
Okay. But in the subcategory there, I'm just curious as to what caused our underestimate. We estimated three fifty and we got eight hundred and thirty-six. So when I look at something that big, I'm like, okay, that's a little beyond the normal error bar.
Yeah, so for general fund, we estimated much closer to what we received for last year.
Oh, I see, I've got to look up and add them both up.
Yep. Yeah, so we'll have a budget amendment on this, and we'll probably look at this a little close, closer for twenty twenty-five budgeting.
Okay. Anything else in particular you want to highlight?
No. The one thing that I would have liked to have added to this, but I didn't have time, I ran out of time. Miscellaneous income on general fund is pretty significant for us, and it's primarily the rent from the landfill. So it's coming on, coming in at the amount we budgeted. But our investment income is also coming in higher than what we budgeted as well. So next time I'm going to have this chart, I'm going to add some additional items for us to look at since we're getting closer to the end of the year.
The revenue or the income from the landfill is a fixed amount, isn't it?
Yes, it is, and it's in miscellaneous income. But it's, when you look at our budget, of course, our taxes for general fund is our largest revenue stream. But then our second largest revenue stream is actually miscellaneous, which is the landfill rent as well as investment income primarily.
How much are we going to get from the landfill for the general fund this year?
It's seven point five million dollars.
And prior year was only seven, right? And I think prior to that was was it six point five?
I believe so, six million.
I think I managed to push fifty thousand and on there somewhere to give to the Cowlets Conservation Group. Okay.
Okay, then the next slide is our expenses to give you a little, and it's a lot of numbers here too. But on our expenses, just showing you where we're at on general fund, of the different classifications of our expenses. We're overall on general fund, we're about fifty-nine percent of budget for actuals. And this time last year, we were about fifty-eight percent. So a little bit, but it's tracking comparative with last year at the same point in time.
And these include our union contracts that were signed last year, right?
These include twenty-four actuals. There were a majority of contracts that were completed and signed last, yes, they were approved last year. Well, they were approved this year, but they went into effect January one. So our budget number includes the effect of all those collective bargaining agreements signed and effective for twenty twenty-four.
On the general fund, how do I look at the capital line?
The capital line is probably predominantly our facilities group. So we just, we don't have hardly anything on capital expenses right now booked. So but we're very similar to where we were at this point in time in twenty twenty-three as well. So we have about eighty-one thousand and ninety-eight thousand last year at this point in time.
Where would I see the contribution to the capital improvement fund or this?
It shows as a transfer, and so it's part of our transfers.
Okay. And what, what's the what's the pace on the transfers? Like, we know a priori how much we're going to transfer on some of the accounts. Do we transfer that all at once on?
Can you say that again?
So the, the contribution to the, to the capital fund is pretty well known ahead of time?
It's a million dollars.
Do we transfer that immediately?
No, I think I, I, I'm not sure if I've already included that in this million seven. I usually do it about mid-year because there usually isn't any expenses in the first part of the year.
For me, it's just a curiosity because all the dollars are in the fund that the county manages and we collect interest. We must move from this account to that account.
Right.
Okay.
On building and planning, their expenses are about one point nine. At this point in time, last year, they were at a little over, they were just right there at two million. So they're at sixty-two percent of budget, and last year, they were at fifty-nine percent of budget. So they're right on track. On the county road expenses, they are currently at thirteen million, which is about thirty-nine percent of their budget. And last year, at this point in time, they were at about fifty-six percent of their budget. So they're a little lower, but that's predominantly in their capital expenditures right now. Everything else is pretty consistent with last year at this point in time.
That's, that's the outcome of, we've got a lot of major projects and there are a lot of funding grants that are up in the air kind of thing.
Yeah, so some of it, some of it's, some of it's ARPA probably in those expenditures. And so we will be doing a few budget amendments to more accurately reflect the timing. I know that Sean has submitted some budget revisions that we'll be doing in October.
What's the debt service on the county road fund?
Yeah, this is, this has to do with pulling in all of our numbers that are, are financial numbers. And so there's currently an entry related to SPIDA's that that's done at the end of the year. And it will be not recorded again until the end of this year. So, so this was a reversal of the prior year SPIDA. It's an accrual. So it is, it's coming in as a negative right now, but it will be trued up come this December.
Okay.
And then for the Health Department, they're currently at about forty-five percent of their budget. And they are, compared to last year, they were at sixty, almost sixty-five percent of their budget. And their numbers for expenses this year, almost two point one million versus two point four million at the same point in time last year. So they're, they're not significantly, they're not significantly off track. They're just a little bit under. And it's primarily because of those reversals that are, that are sitting there for the capital and debt service related to SPIDA. So it's skewing that number a little bit. Otherwise, they would be right on track with this point, same point in time last year. Okay. Okay. Then, um, there's another slide, property taxes. These are kind of small numbers. Sorry, my, I couldn't get the slide to, to, um, enlarge very much. But, um, but basically year-to-date, we've collected for general fund, um, about eleven point four million dollars through, through August, um, leaving us a balance of a little over eight million dollars still to collect. And that reflects back to what I said, that the other half of our, uh, property tax assessments are due, due to be paid in October. So.
But that's not to say that, that we've actually prepaid in advance, a, a few of us, right?
Yeah.
And that's why the eight is not eleven.
Right, right. Yeah, there's, there's receipts coming in every single month, but the two largest receipt months are April and October.
These are the numbers. In twenty twenty-four, we did not take the, the one percent.
Correct.
And we're not taking the one percent or any catch-up in the next, in twenty twenty-five either.
That's, I, I think we will present the, um, levy information later this month in November for the commissioners to approve.
Okay, and, uh, it sounds like I may have misspoken by your answer. You're trying to remember the meeting not that long ago.
Yeah, a few weeks ago, we kind of talked preliminarily about twenty twenty-five revenue.
Right, and we decided not to take the extra money.
The one percent, right.
Right, and we had already banked about four hundred thousand?
About four hundred thousand, yeah. So the preliminary, um, values, the preliminary assessments were released just this past Friday, I think. Um, and so we'll be looking at those and bringing those forward to you in November.
Okay.
Yeah. So property tax collections, pretty much on track with where they were last year. Um, and, um, and you can see the previous year's property tax, um, assessments, what's still to be collected for those. Nothing significant.
I, I think the people are interested in, uh, getting taxed as down to about the twenty fifteen level as reported on this graph.
So, yep. So the next slide is one that I share with you every month about sales tax, um, total sales and use tax. And these are, um, just showing you that, of course, we've been down this year compared to last year. The good news is the month of July, we're, um, we're down only six percent as opposed to last month, we were down nine percent. And these are actually through last week. I was able to, uh, pull the numbers for July, which were paid in the month of, of September. Um, and so, um, anyway, so this is as most up-to-date as I possibly can get right now. And it shows that, um, so far through July, we've collected six point, through the earning month, July, six point four million. We have a budget of eleven point nine, so we're about fifty-four percent of our budget, um, which my target would be that we should be more like about fifty-eight percent of budget. So we are going to do a, a slight budget amendment in the month of October to bring that revenue down. Um, and then also we talked about this a couple of weeks ago and projecting what we would project for twenty twenty-five.
We, we do frequent amendments and that often.
At least quarterly.
And that often confuses me because, uh, like in this case, if there were no other changes anyplace except for this, uh, data collection being down by four percent, would that trigger an amendment to the budget?
I don't, I don't know. Um, I, I think we should amend the budget because this is one of our, one of our major revenue streams.
The reason I'm asking is because in, in our own household, we have a budget and we don't, we may move the categories around, but we tend to increase the, the expenditures while at home, we're not able to do that. And it's, it's a tendency that government has not to live within the budget. And so I, I would tend to discourage too many amendments.
So, um, this is where we're at. We also did, I would, I wish the other commissioners were here because I, I wanted to report that I've done some analysis of the categories of our sales tax and why it's potentially down. Um, the two categories that are, um, major contributors to the, to the decline in our sales tax is construction and manufacturing. Both of those, um, when we analyze the monthly trend data, both of those are down from twenty-three numbers to twenty-four.
Are they down, are they down to, uh, explain the, of the four percent? Or did, did the other data give you a higher number and so it's actually beyond four percent?
Yes. There's actually a few categories that are higher. Um, most are on track with last year. Um, there's one category related to food, which is our grocery, things like that. And so it is a little bit higher, but that's tracking with the inflation numbers as well. So, um, you know, that's, but the ones that I see that are down are construction, specialty trades and construction too, and manufacturing. Those, those are down.
Yeah, those, those numbers are always far more alarming because they, they're the, the constructive part of the economy. You're actually making something. The other one, you're consuming it.
Consuming.
Yeah.
So then one last slide on finance that we, we do re- show consistently for you is recording fee income. And through, this is through August. Um, and our recording fee income, um, it's interesting, we've got five months of increases and we've got three months of decreases. So, um, but the good news is, you know, we've had, um, five different months of increases and so we're pretty much on track on our recording fee with where we were for twenty twenty-three. It's a little bit different than sales tax, but, and this relates to real estate transactions, so.
This is the part of fee that comes to the county.
Goes back to, mhm, right. And this, um, and you, as you can see, we're tracking pretty consistently. Last year, the higher months are the, um, from May to August. And again, our higher numbers for this year are May to August as well. With the loan was June being a decline of sixteen percent, so. But otherwise, we're on track, we're, we're tracking for all of those months, those peak months with increases.
Now, there was a, there's pretty of a long view for some portion of twenty twenty-three or all of it had its own. It collect, it kept its own recording fees.
Right.
Is that reflected here?
But that, no, that, that's still i- in the numbers. It's still part of the numbers of what's re- what's collected. And then it was re- they, their numbers were remitted monthly, I think, to them instead of being retained by the county. And that's it on the finance part.
Thank you. A lot of numbers to look at.
Yep. The next one on your agenda is, uh, drug court. Um, this is from the general fund. And so, um, drug court does bring in some, some revenue, um, it, while they're a general fund category. So they, they have about, um, seven hundred thousand dollars with their revenues budgeted, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, basically. And of those, the majority of that is related to their other transfers and that's a transfer in, um, from our mental, behavioral, mental health sales tax. Overall, uh, looking at their revenues, um, they're slightly down on their collections versus budget. And so we probably are going to do a slight budget amendment because their overall expenses are also lower, um, than their, their reimbursement-related revenues. Any questions? I'm going to go to the expenses to show you that we're budgeting about eight hundred thousand for drug court expenditures this year. We're at a, at five hundred and two thousand as of, um, August. Um, and so the personal expenses are projected for the entire year to be a little bit lower because of the vacancy. They basically have about seven and a half positions and one being vacant.
So do those numbers correspond to the numbers at the bottom of the chart?
Yes, um, personal expenses for the current year is three sixty-five and.
No, no, I meant in terms of the staffing, you said seven and I see.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's six and a half. Staff, six and a half staff. And of that, one is a vacancy.
Yeah, five point five and then a vacancy.
Mhm. Oh, filled is five point five, vacant one. So in total, they have six point five budgeted positions. So that's why their actuals are a little bit below where we have them targeted.
Yeah.
Yep. And they're a little bit below on services and right on track with, uh, supplies. So, any other? Would you like?
Yeah, well, I, I was chatting with Adam before the meeting, uh, and, uh, I wouldn't mind hearing from drug court people, how things are going, how many people and, uh, actually the total budget number, like if I just put blinders on, how much does drug court, what's the total, total cost for drug court? The, uh, in, in, including numbers from all over the place.
Well, for, for our budget, it's eight hundred thousand.
Okay.
Total for drug court. And of that, about seven hundred and forty-one thousand comes in from grants and then behavioral, mental health. And so the general fund is actually supplementing that, um, to the tune of about, um, sixty thousand dollars. The difference between revenue and expenses.
So the total in expenses, if I use the number, uh.
But the budgeted expenses are eight oh two, two fifty-seven.
Eight oh two, okay.
And the budgeted revenues are almost seven hundred and forty-one thousand.
Adam, talk to us about how drug court's doing. You need to introduce yourself.
Sorry, sorry about that. Uh, good morning, Commissioner. Um, drug court is going well, uh, if we're looking at numbers. I am Adam Pittan. I'm the, uh, program manager for Cowls County Therapeutic Courts. Thank you. Um, yeah, our programs are going well. We have, uh, about ninety people in drug court and I think forty-five in mental health court. Uh, so those are our largest programs and they're doing really well. I think we're around.
The eight hundred K we just heard is the sum of both drug and mental health court?
Of all of our programs, including the family dependency court and the juvenile drug court.
So you, oh, uh, you've got a hundred and hundred and thirty-five people you're handling.
Yeah, we're around, uh, one fifty-five, I think, when you include all the programs, including the juvenile and the family dependency court of clients that we're currently working with on a day-to-day basis.
Why does this seem quite a bit larger than the last, uh, than prior to the COVID years?
Um, well, our mental health court has grown since prior to COVID. Um, our numbers for drug court are about where they were prior to COVID, but our drug, our mental health court has grown. So we were around twenty before, prior to COVID and now we're about forty-five for mental health court.
Okay, and the eight hundred applies only to the drug court participants?
No, that's the entirety of our programs.
Including the, uh, the, uh, the juvenile one.
The mental health, yeah, yes. But that position has gone vacant and we're not planning on, uh, filling it, at least not for this year. So we will be under in our spending.
And, um, the program is two years?
A, it's, i- it's individualized. It's no less than a year and that's very few people do that. Um, I, I mapped out the average for graduates once and it was twenty-three and a half months on the average a couple of years ago when I mapped that out. So most of our clients stay in longer, uh, they take their time. Uh, we don't, we don't rush them, uh, unlike, uh, traditional supervision where it's time-based. Ours is on program requirement-based and completing the program.
Okay, and, uh, this year, so if we were in a steady-state situation, I would expect to see about a hundred and fifty graduates a year?
No, that's, um, exceptionally high for any program. Our average graduation through the years is probably around thirty. We're at twenty-five this year and we expect to graduate about ten more in November, so.
So what happens to the other? I mean, that, that's a s- twenty percent of the participants graduate?
Well, we constantly have people coming in and going out of the program. So we're opting people in, people are graduating, some people leave the program, uh, through termination, um, although those numbers are much smaller. Um.
But, but kind of go more slowly. You, you kind of know wh- what I'm asking there. Uh, we, we take in a whole bunch of people, but only a few graduate.
No, our graduation rate's around fifty-five percent of the people that come in the program graduate the program.
How do I rationalize the, the number of graduates versus the number of current participants?
Because they have to work through the program. So if they're working through the program at about twenty-three and a half months, it takes time to get through the program.
Right. So my question was prefaced as in a steady-state situation.
Yeah.
Uh, and I, I want to know what you expect the graduation r- rate to be in a steady-state situation. You, you've been operating a, a bit and I, I don't know what the numbers were for, uh, for previous years, but, uh, it is typical, say you have an entering class of a hundred percent and you have an exiting class of, and.
Well, I, yes, if you were looking at like a school where everybody came in at the same time and worked through at the same pace for the same amount of time, we have people constantly coming in, you know, we had three people opt in, guy, last week. So they, they. guy last week. So they, they start where they're at, but we also have people that are getting ready to graduate in November. So it's not, it's not like a freshman class coming in and working through high school together. It's, there are people in all different stages of the program at any given time. So they
Yeah, I, I, I think that's the obvious part. I'm, you're still not answering the question, which is how do I rationalize the fact that you've got 155 people in the program? Maybe last year you had 155 people in the program? Approximately, I, I don't know. Let's assume that last year and the year before you had 155, 155, 155 for three years in a row. And if the 30 is the average number of graduates, that would tell me regardless of what all the other arguments are, that 30 over 160, about 3/16ths are graduating.
Yeah, um, our numbers went way down over the pandemic, so we're building back up from that. And our numbers had been growing prior to the pandemic, so we haven't had a sustaining period of time where we've had an average of 150 in the programs. So I
So that tells me, you're trying to tell me next year, the, the number of graduates will probably be 55?
Possibly. We, that, that's possible.
Possible?
It's, it's, yes, it's possible. I, I can't, it, it depends on how much, when people are ready to graduate the program. There are some people in the program for, you know, 18 months, some people in it for 24 months, some people in it for 36 months. So there's no end time for an individual.
Down that because there are always exceptions. We have to look at these things at a pretty high level statistically. Any one circumstance is just not so useful. We, and so repeating that it's, it's individualized program doesn't really help me any on, unless you tell me that there's a bias in your program, but I'm assuming that all things are pretty well, you're doing the best you can. And so on average.
Yes. On it. The, the daily amount of people is not the same necessarily from one day to the next because of opt-ins, graduates or terminations. The numbers do math out, but for me to explain it to you right here, right now, I, I don't have that in front of me to look at.
If I recall correctly, the, well before COVID, Drug Court had three more people on staff at least? Is that correct or just bad recollection?
No. No, we had three Drug Court case managers, one Mental Health Court case manager, and then a juvenile slash family dependency court case manager. At five, before COVID, one of those positions in Drug Court became vacant. I didn't fill it because the trends weren't trending upward. They were stagnant and then COVID hit. I've, I've never had three more than what we have now.
Okay. The tell me about the sort of what you look at after graduation. So I, I go through the program and I graduate. Do, do you have statistics on what the graduates do?
We look at recidivism data and I presented to you, what was it, just over a year ago? Some of that information. I wasn't, I'm sorry, I thought we were discussing the, the budget. I wasn't in financials, I wasn't prepared to come in with a data presentation.
Yeah, okay, we can, we can skip that part. We have used this meeting before to explore that because doing the budget in the absence of, of the full picture is, is a little bit, like, I don't know what to do. I just saw a bunch of numbers.
Well, I understand that. We did present a year ago based off of what you said you would like to see on, on follow-up with the graduates. And then we also, when we do research, we look at recidivism data.
Okay.
With the graduates and which we presented before.
Are you, are you collecting the data in a different way today than you were 18 months ago?
That, that was based off of a survey, so we're discussing how we can present that survey in the future to get better results. But we, it's not an ongoing collection for graduates. That has to be something that we look at through recidivism data at the time that we do the research. And that's obviously whether people have had new criminal convictions. And then the other one will be a survey, which we're trying to figure out a better avenue for getting more results back from that survey process with the graduates.
All right, well, let me stop here and maybe we can do something when other commissioners are here.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Anything you want me to know about the Drug Court programs that, from a financial standpoint?
From a financial standpoint, we're on track actually to underspend this year due to the vacant position. With our numbers stagnant, stagnant where they are, we felt comfortable staying there with the current staff level. So definitely this year, we're not looking at building our staff anymore. But otherwise, our programs are running very well.
If you had twice the money, how would that impact you?
I believe with twice the money, obviously we could hire more case managers, we could bring more people into the program. We could probably provide better resources for the people in the program to give them a hand up in order to get on their own two feet.
Explain that?
Well, resources, we, if we could use resources like housing, job training, things like that, which we do get some through the CJTA funds. But with more funding, we could help more people in those areas to kind of get them on their feet in their early recovery stages and get them going on their own accord beyond that.
Yeah, I, I'm looking for more specific to Drug Court in the sense that the, there are about six pages of agencies around the county that deal with all kinds of welfare, drug issues and so forth.
And we work with those agencies.
I'm sure you do, but that's not the money I'm talking about. I'm talking about for Drug Court itself.
For Drug Court, we would do that at staffing levels so that we could assist more clients through the program.
So the, the demand, if 10 people were circumstantially eligible for Drug Court today, would you be able to add them on or does that?
We would be able to today, but at that level, we would eventually need another case manager to assist with that. So today we, we have around 90, that would put us at 100 if we took 10 people in today. And I would say under current staffing level, we could probably take on a caseload of maybe about 30 more people between Mental Health Court and Drug Court before I would be looking at another case manager.
So as we look into the future, the dollars we saw today excluding some kind of escalation for, for salaries or something like that should be pretty in pretty much what we see in the next year at least.
Yes, yes. I, I don't have any anticipation of pursuing any changes in my budget over 2025.
Which my colleagues were here, they could ask other questions.
I do too.
Anybody in the audience have questions? Ooh, we have, we have a taker. You'll, you'll, you'll have to swap spots. Adam, if you wouldn't mind going to this seat.
Just for point of clarification, Adam. So when you said you, you guys have 155 people.
Between all of our programs.
Between all the programs, the graduation rate that you rate, that you quoted, was that just on Drug Court or was that including mental health?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, that is just Drug Court that I've looked at. The Mental Health Court, I'd have to run those numbers again, but I think when I ran it, it was about the same.
Okay, so it's not, it's not 30 of 155, it's 30 of
Yeah.
90 or whatever?
That is a good point. The, the graduation, thank you, yes. When we're looking at Drug Court, we have about 90 people in Drug Court. So I was just discussing the graduation rate of Drug Court. So not the 150. Thank you for clarifying that.
So is there a graduation rate for Mental Health Court? How, how does that?
There is, it's about the same. So I would have to look at where we're
The same percentage?
It's about the same percentage of 55%.
Okay, now, Drug Court graduation, oh, don't go away, I, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I, that was my question.
Drug Court graduation, I think is pretty clear to me. You, you were a problem, you got your problems taken care of and you're not going to provide other problems to other people, you graduate. Mental health, what's the metric there for graduation?
There are similar requirements as Drug Court and that is ongoing stability with mental health. A lot of our clients in Mental Health Court do have substance use disorders also, so it's really a dual diagnosis. So we work with their substance use disorder, going to treatment, having the same metrics as, as the Adult Drug Court program and then also dealing with the mental health. And so we look for them to move through the program and show stability on their mental health and with their medications before graduation over an extended period of time. So we have a phase system that measures that time of, of compliance or, or stability, I guess would be better.
So if it's purely mental health, what? I'm not familiar with mental health people being cured. I am familiar with them being going on a management program. So that's what we're talking about.
That is what we were talking about, stability with their mental health, their medications, working with the mental health professionals. And usually it's an encouragement of ongoing mental health support beyond graduation.
Is that a very different thing in Drug Court, if I'm an addict, I, I, I know how not to be an addict.
Yeah.
Once I'm there, and so forth, but mental health, how do I stay that way?
So a big portion of what we do working with clients is not just the mental health or the substance use disorder treatment. It's building support groups and recognizing when you're sliding backwards, I guess, to savor, lack of better use of the term. So we, we work with people to build a support system beyond our courts. And that is to carry on with the hope that it carries on beyond graduation from our programs.
How often do you perform graduation ceremonies? Twice a year or?
Four times a year for graduation. The other programs do them as they come up for graduation.
And so based on the number of people coming in, number of people going out that you manage, how, what, what do you see as the success rate of people that graduate versus people that fail out of the system? Or move on to somewhere else?
So some of the research that we've done, or the research that we've done has shown that people who graduate the program, this is within three years, 80 to 86% of them do not commit a new crime or aren't convicted of a new crime within three years of graduating. And the overall for people who leave the program, it's 75% do not commit a new crime or, or I guess a better term would be aren't convicted of a new crime after graduation or completing their sentence. So, and I believe the number is about 60% of people who were terminated or left the program by their own will, don't have a new conviction within three years of completing their sentence.
Okay, so I, I think I heard you say 75% of the people who graduate.
75% of the total people who leave our program.
Whether they graduate or not?
Whether they graduate or not. It's about 80 to 86% of the people that graduate the program do not have a new conviction within three years.
So roughly how many people graduate the program? Out of, out of the 100% that come into the program, how many successfully graduate the program?
Since the beginning, it's over 600 people have graduated the program.
I still not telling me a percentage of, how many people graduate the program versus came into the program?
Oh, sorry, it's 55%.
So 55%, so you, okay, a little over half, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I, I think what we should do is invite Adam to come on a Wednesday afternoon to do a full-blown thing. Could you put that on your, on your calendar to do us the annual update?
Different than what I did last year?
Why do you, why does last year constrain you from doing one this year?
Well, because I haven't done, I don't have new data to present beyond last year. I wasn't prepared to do a research presentation this year. It takes time to collect and prepare. I mean, I can come and discuss the data that we have.
Okay, I, I find that a little troublesome. So let, let, let's oh.
I mean, I can, I can pull new things, but last year we did an entire, or we sent out surveys to graduates and collected all that data. It was, it was time-consuming process, but I mean, I can give current numbers. But we usually have research done. So I was prepared to meet with the new Board of County Commissioners that comes on, see what they wanted to go.
By, by whom?
By a researcher. In the past, we've hired a researcher to do research.
The, the guy out of Portland?
Yes.
That was a, that's what I was afraid.
I mean, we can look at other researchers, but those, that's usually a process to collect new data.
What was the percentage of returns on the surveys you sent out?
I don't know the percentage because the method that we used doesn't tell me how many people actually received it. We got 49 responses back that were included in that.
Okay, so let me, let me say it again. How many did you send out?
That's where it's difficult because we sent them out through Messenger. That was the only method we had at the time that we were sending them out. So, and I had other people, including some graduates, helping me. So I can't really tell you how many were sent out and how many were received because if you don't know, if you're not friends with that individual, they may not get that message. It goes into another folder. So that's why I'm saying it's hard to say how many were sent out. Because the method that we used, it wasn't like we mailed them out or had direct email to the individuals. And, and other people helped to try to get it out to people. So unfortunately, that's, that's where we need to, you know, look at new methodology as to how we get things out to, to graduates.
Yeah, so clearly there's interest in, in these, in Drug Court. Please do plan on doing a presentation, even if you say it's rehashing old stuff.
Yeah, I can.
And maybe you can pick the time within the next month or two?
I'll discuss it with the, the judges.
Sure. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We have IT now.
Yes. We have a financial report for IT. Bailey, we'll pull that up. Okay, so IT has two funds, their operating fund and their reserve fund. And this is their operating fund that we'll start with. On their current year revenues, the largest amount of revenue they have is because they're a service department. They bring in a little over four, almost $4.5 million in internal billings to our various departments. And that's their largest revenue source. It's on track for budget. Their miscellaneous is their investment income. So they've earned a larger amount than what we budgeted. They've earned 124,000 compared to a budget of basically 34,000. And then they also bring in some government, intergovernmental, they have a grant. I, I believe this was for I think this, I'm, I'm not sure if this was for server or for switch, that grant, but anyway, so they brought in a little bit more than what we have budgeted. So we're going to do a budget amendment in October on their revenue source. The other thing to particularly note on this is that their beginning balance, their beginning unreserved beginning fund balance was significantly understated. And we're, I've done some analysis and we're was significantly understated. Um, and we're, I've done some analysis and we're going to do a budget amendment to correct that, um, at this next budget amendment of about one point five million dollars. And then we're also going to transfer that over to the, um, the reserve fund. And I'll, I'll show that in the expenses in a little bit. But, um, so, so they haven't received all of their ARPA reimbursements as of yet. We have about three hundred thousand. We're budgeting for that and, um, we're at one oh two on other financing sources. Are there any questions about their operating revenues?
I see no hands up. Anybody in the audience want to ask?
Right.
I struggle with some departments and IT is not, is one of them in that, uh, when I see re- 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 revenue for the department, I'm like, no, you don't get revenue. You, you, you just cost us. And so is there, eh eh, it's difficult for the reason we do this in the public eye is twofold. One is so that we can be checked on, and two is for us to let the public know where things are, are are costing us and all that. And so this, uh, this makes it a bit complicated for me to see. IT is a complete, it doesn't produce a product that is purchased or sold or anything like that. It's an internal operation, right?
An internal operation and we turn around and bill our other departments.
Right.
For their services.
How we pay for it and how we allocate it, it's, I would almost say from the top front, I, I'd want two categories. The stuff that comes in on grants and the stuff that came in from the general fund, just basically two numbers. And the expense then is a, a single number which we then break down, of course, into.
And we're, and just so, um, this week is also, um, we have a workshop on our cost allocations. And IT being, uh, one of the major ones is going to be presented on Wednesday afternoon at two-thirty. So we'll be going over the twenty-twenty-five budget of how we cost out this internal service department to the various other departments. So as you said, the expenses are really the, the meat of this department as far as, um, where, where the billings are derived from, and so it's based upon the expenses. And so on the expenses, personnel expenses are, um, budgeted currently at almost one point nine million. That's, there's two areas that have the majority of the expenses for IT. That's in personnel and supplies. Um, both of those are under where we expect are targeted as of this point in time. And personnel is below budget due to some vacancies that they have. And then, um, supplies are primarily where we pay our software subscription and maintenance contracts. And most of ours, uh, for the county are paid, uh, towards the fourth quarter of the year. And so those, um, will be coming in in the next few months to be paid. Um, our capital expense, um, budget exceeds a little bit of what we had started the year off with. So we'll be amending that. And then additionally, um, because I did some analysis of the fund balance here, our, our goal is to only keep about two to three months' worth of fund balance in the operating account and keep all of our excess in our reserve account. And so when I did the, last year did the analysis of the reserve account, we're pretty much, um, on track on that one as far as what we've recorded as a fund balance. But for the operating account, we didn't do, um, we didn't have the opportunity to analyze that last year. So that's why I'm recommending that we make an adjustment and transfer out that excess balance over to our reserve. Um, so we'll have that as a budget amendment in October, and it's one point five million dollars. So in all, we're under budget, our actual expenses are under where we, um, projected them to be for this year.
It's so tempting to get into a long discussion.
Well, you'll have an opportunity again on Wednesday when we talk about the twenty-twenty-five budget as well.
Oh, good. Let's do it then. Okay. But in the meantime, uh, is there anything the IT director would like to say? It, do we have any expectations of, uh, like if I look at the IT budget year after year, I probably see a trend, or do I?
Um, yes, there's a, there's a trend, there's escalation. Their maintenance and subscription cost, um, traditionally escalate every year. I think we budgeted like a eight percent increase this past year. I think they're coming in a little less than that, but um, that's what we, we see on trend. Um, and then our personal expenses uh, trend upward because of colas and step increases and such. But as far as number of positions, they're pretty much, um, still, they're at, um, budgeted for fifteen positions this year. And last year they had one additional position, and that was during a training period. There was a, um, training period and one of the positions left and it was not replaced.
Okay. Because the way IT expenses get allocated out, a lot of departments have concerns over that. And I know you've looked over doing that allocation. You say we will meet shortly to discuss again.
Right, yeah, on Wednesday afternoon at two-thirty.
That could be a long meeting then, huh?
Yeah, there's, there's about three to four different internal service department cost allocations we want to go over. And IT is being one of the, the larger ones and the more complex one. We'll also go a risk management.
Have, eh eh, are you thinking of alter, altering what's been done?
Um, not, well, there is some alteration on the IT one. We're now including telecom in the IT allocation, so.
I, I guess in general, it seems like we struggle very much to make things fair by putting in complexity, not realizing that the cost of complexity is not included and the, 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 the gain for that complexity oftentimes escapes me. It's like, why would we do that? Yes, it's not fair here, but you do this, it's not fair there. What's the difference?
One of the things, um, for twenty-twenty-five is that, um, they did do, um, um, a pretty thorough inventory of all of the devices. And so that has caused some differences for twenty-twenty-five versus twenty-twenty-four. So, but it's predominantly based upon number of devices, the allocation.
Yeah, with IT, it's often a trade-off between a, 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 a program that, uh, bumps. Eh eh, when I look at, uh, employees, not ev, not every employee needs two monitors and needs this and needs that, and doesn't need a fast machine and that kind of thing. But the more we make those little distinctions there, the more staff we need to manage that. And I don't know where that balance line is. I, I expect that the, uh, IT director at some point will say, here is the trade-off. And then the board can say, yes, I want more or less of this with the opposite happening over there. Makes sense, Mr. IT Director? How can you argue against an answer like that?
Yeah. So the other, the other era fund that they have, I, like I said, was their reserve fund, and there's not a really a lot. There isn't a lot of expenses going on there. Um, and the revenue for this reserve fund. So Bailey, would you like to, will you change my screen? Thank you. On our reserve fund, um, the majority of the revenue here is investment income and, um, and also a transfer in from the operating account is made each year into the reserve account um, to help fund various long-term capital assets. Uh, those being infrastructure, servers, switches, um, things like that for the county. And so, um, this is a, um, transfer in of about half a million dollars uh, to help fund the, and the telephone system to help fund those in the future. Um, and then as far as expenses.
Wait, wait, how, how is that number determined?
Um, that number, that number is determined based upon, and so that's one of the changes that we made from twenty-four to twenty-five. Um, we looked at the basis for this, twenty, twenty of, twenty-twenty-four was our first year to, to have some supporting data um, for this number, uh, because before it was just an arbitrary transfer, um, of, of a dollar amount over to the reserve account. Um, other than the reserve for the, uh, sheriff's office G-Tex. Um, and so this, this year, this one was based upon number of servers that needed to possibly be replaced. Um, things of that nature, um, were included in this number. For twenty-twenty-five, our IT directors looked at that a little more thoroughly and included switches, servers, uh, virtual, um, am I saying that right? Virtual? Vir- virtual service license, licensing's and, um, and things to improve our infrastructure. So I think we did a, um, a more thorough job this year of looking at what is absolutely needed to be transferred over to the reserve for those things, for those capital longer-lived assets.
So that number four ninety-seven K was a function of any number of decisions.
Yep. So it include about seventy-something thousand of that was for the sheriff's office. The rest of it was for, um, some estimates on servers and things like that.
Do the when we allocate the IT costs, we do that at the end of the year? So you've got to prepare the budget for twenty-twenty-five. My department needs to know how much you're going to charge me.
Right, right.
How soon do I know that? And, and is that an automatic amendment to the budget?
No, uh, we, we just do the cost allocation once a year. We typically pull those numbers together in late spring, May time period. And they're based upon the previous year's expenses, actual expenditures. And then we try to estimate, of course, escalations and maintenance agreements and, and personnel cost. And so we put those together and they're finished in the summer and they're provided to the departments when they start doing their budgets. And we, we don't change them during the year.
So we have a lag of approximately a year?
Yeah, we have a lag of approximately a year.
Okay, thank you.
So, um, anyway, so for the reserve account, um, we pretty much had the reserve balance budget correct. Um, I double-checked it. Um, and we are bringing in a little, almost half a million dollars for, um, replacement cost. And then we currently don't really, on the expenditure side, we don't have um, anything budgeted for this year other than a few items. And, um, next year we'll have a large expense for replacement of the sheriff rugged laptops. They, they call them G-Tax. Um, and so that will be a large expense that we're putting in next year's budget. So this year we have, um, some switches that we budgeted, um, and those, uh, will, those expenses will come in and we'll, we'll need to, they haven't hit yet, but they will be, um, posted soon, so. So in the end, when I correct and make a budget transfer out of the operating account, we're going to end up with something, in the year with something like a five million dollar reserve balance in our IT reserves. And so that's where we're at. And that's, that's another, yeah, it's another, um, topic that we'll discuss on Wednesday. What is the right type of balance that we should have in our IT reserve too? Because that's a reflection of um, what we're billing our internal departments. But the good news is we have a very, um, solid reserve balance of over five million dollars to address, um, replacement cost and unanticipated, um, IT needs.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have. A busy morning.
Well, I think we can go straight to the agenda item review, which is Public Works, although at this point, uh, since I'm the only one here, uh, Bailey, do you know whether we'll have a second commissioner tomorrow? Then it should be here, and then you said something that I didn't catch. Yes, please do that. Okay.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Drop the S.
So on the agenda tomorrow, we have one motion item, uh, from Public Works. And it's a bid award and contract execution with Lakeside Industries. Um, this is at Riverside Park for the asphalt replacement on the tennis and basketball courts. Next to the shop at the Riverside. Uh, we had four bidders on this. Uh, the lowest, of course, was Lakeside. We also had three additional ones at higher values, but somewhat close. Uh, and we have a, a contract completion of an estimated sixty calendar days, so it should be done by the end of the year.
Just in time for the snow and rain?
Yeah. And I do believe this is an ARPA-funded project.
Yeah, yeah, I, th- this has been discussed and it's, so, there's probably nothing to say. I, I spent a year in Boston and, uh, in the wintertime, uh, you could get space in a tennis, eh eh, in an indoor building where they have a tennis court. It's not heated. The balls, when you first start out, are not normal. Finally, when they warm up and get a little more pliable, then you're going to have a real game. But you got to hit them around a bit before that happens. Anyhow, cute. Anything else?
That's all we have for the agenda items tomorrow.
There was a question I was going to ask you, and I will ask you. Uh, we get tons of, uh, emails from, uh, the federal energy Burke, right? Do you look at those?
I do, I do. I do, I do skim them. I don't read them in depth. I've looked at a few of them in depth when I thought they might impact us. But they're mainly them completing their requirements.
I I do exactly the same thing, and I particularly know that part of my. District is up around some of the dams and there are people who are interested. Leaks, what, 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 you know, and so I try, I I do comb through them, but. It's a little bit. I mean, there's so much perfunctory stuff that I, it's, it actually, if there were something important there, we could miss it. But if there are two of us, it's unlike, it just improves the probability that we'll spot something. Good. That's the only question I had.
You're taking it easy on us this morning?
You're taking it easy on me, you know? And, you know, the turnabout's fair play, yeah. Did you have something else you wish to torture us with?
Not today. I'm sure I will other days, but I don't have anything else today.
But before you go, how are we doing for for tomorrow, Bailey? Okay, thank you. So much fun being a cantankerous commissioner. Actually, it's not. Well. What else do we have on the agenda for today? The Sheriff's Department. I assume they're going to be online. If they are going to be at all. Let's see anybody there. I see the auditor online. And the Human Resources session is also canceled today, so we may be. Running to the end of the line, although it's always good if Carolyn Fundingsland wants to. Wants to tell us anything new and interesting out of elections. Oh, maybe. Good morning, Carolyn.
Good morning. How are you?
I am happy that I can't see the clock behind you.
I know, I, I wasn't ready to move over. I would have taken my background off. I'm sitting in my boring old office downstairs listening to you. So, but I didn't have time when you called me over to take my background off. So not a lot going on. Right now in the auditor's office, this is our quiet time. We have built the ballots. And the local voters pamphlet and everything should be coming out. We mail the ballots. By the eighteenth, people should start seeing them in their mailboxes about the eighteenth, nineteenth. And the local voters pamphlet actually should be arriving next week, if not by the end of this week. So be looking for your local voter pamphlets in the mail. And which will include state races in a general election, because the Secretary of State does. Publish their own voters pamphlet in a general election and ballots around the week of the eighteenth. You have any questions for me?
Questions for Carolyn? Don't see any. How, how's your crystal ball? How, what participation do you expect?
So, you know, we broke records in twenty twenty. And, you know, I always say elections are unpredictable these days. I, I, I just tend to get it wrong. I'd like to think that if we broke records in twenty twenty, twenty twenty four would surpass that. But I certainly didn't see that in the primary, so I, I really don't know. I'm expecting a high turnout, but I don't know that it'll break records like twenty twenty did.
Refresh us on the numbers in twenty twenty?
So in a, in a presidential year, we always see an eighty plus percent. But let me look real quick at what we exactly saw. In. Twenty twenty. So twenty, yeah, eighty three point four three percent. Which is really good. Then if we go back to twenty sixteen, which. Again, we continue to raise the bar, but two thousand sixteen was seventy five point four seven, big difference, almost a ten percent difference. But kind of dismal returns in this year's primary, so.
How did the, those numbers for the presidential compare with other counties and then across the nation?
You know.
High to me.
Statistically, the Washington State is a leader in turnout, however. Because of the way you have to compare apples to apples and not apples to oranges, and because of the way we conduct our elections. Everybody that's registered gets a ballot. So automatically our turnout is going to appear as if it's lower than somebody that say. Has a polling location and they. And they don't send ballots out, so you're already skewing data. But Washington, Colorado and Oregon almost always tend to be the leaders in turnout. Both with our military voters and absentee voters. But I have to say statewide, Howlett's County in Washington State does not. You know, we, we're in the lower ranking of the counties. Just to put it bluntly, of the thirty nine, we're typically hovering somewhere ranked at number twenty three, which is not good.
And in, in, in a more ethereal space, what's the latest on RCV?
So we are getting ready to start our twenty twenty five legislative session and. You know, we will have a lot of new legislators in twenty twenty five. And I. If I had to predict anything, I would say it's coming our way. Now be prepared, because with that comes an incredible cost. I already know that legislators are working on bills that not only implement RCV. But put a massive amount of requirements on us when doing so, and that means educating the public. Lot of mandates of voter outreach and educating so that people understand the change. In addition to the change. I don't, we won't see it in twenty twenty five, but I'm certain that the legislature would give us time to implement. But I think it's in our near future. You know, if you're following Oregon, if you're following Oregon, they're using ranked choice voting for the first time this year. So City of Portland. I want to say the general election, they are using ranked choice voting in Portland, a couple of different jurisdictions. It's not statewide, just a couple of jurisdictions, so you might want to follow up on how that went for City of Portland. And I think their city representatives that they were electing in Oregon.
Well, as you know, we've discussed this, and I think it's a good idea, and you think it's a horrible idea.
I just think that anybody. That likes the idea of ranked choice voting should actually sit in and see what. What the ballots look like when they come back to us. Just you, you get a different perspective when, when you see the administration side. And I see some faces in the audience that have spent some time. Observing elections and watching us process ballots. And it's a little unnerving when you first see that. Not everybody takes it as seriously, not everybody follows the rules, and then there's flat out confusion. And and it's, it's fairly rampant. It's not. It's not a minority, so it, it worries me. What election administration would look like for people that maybe aren't interested in. Educating themselves on how to vote their ballot, so.
I think we're possibly not so far apart on that. I certainly appreciate that. I, I, I know I've got. I, I don't care for the argument that says. You must modify what you do because our software cannot handle it. So there, it, software is there to help you do what you should be doing and not the other way around. With software dictating how you do stuff. And the same argument might apply here, but then reality comes into play. And it's the human factor here that you're, you're mentioning that. It, it, for some reason or other, it's just very hard to. Get a, a, a process like RCV to be understood across the board in the public. And if you don't do that, then there are always lots of problems, probably a lot of lawsuits.
You, you nailed it right on the head. I, if, if we can't get everybody to understand that they get one vote. And how to follow the directions. It's hard for me to imagine what will happen in a ranked choice voting style ballot. But I will let you know that our software vendor is really on it and ready for this. In fact, we have the same software vendor. Most of Washington State, the majority of counties. Are using clear ballot now, and because King County's council went ahead and voted to implement ranked choice voting. They're absorbing most of the cost for the development. That's not to say that it won't come with a huge price tag. Because obviously the software vendor is going to take full advantage of implementing this change. But they are on it and they're ready. So, and like I say, King County will be the first to test it out since they've already adopted it. I believe they start in twenty twenty five. But one other area.
Problem for the new commissioners.
Yeah, one other area of concern that I would point out is, I think in Washington State, we like our options, right? And what I have seen proposed so far in legislation. Gives jurisdictions the option of running an election via ranked choice voting. And really, you can't have that. You need to pick a method and stick with it. If you think about the ballot that you're being mailed. Consider, say the PUD runs a ranked choice vote and everybody else is vote for one. It could not be more confusing to voters and technology. So I would just hope that if it's a change that's coming our way, it's, it's done right.
Yep, that's a good point. Well, I don't have any hands up here. I just as soon say that the meeting's over if that's acceptable to everybody. Everybody being defined as my small audience, small, my audience of in small numbers. Thanks, Carolyn.